District to order. Roll call everyone is here. Okay, item three, approval of the agenda.
So the published agenda, I have one additional item. Uh, new business, D, sorry, let me get to talk about this, what do you mean? Um, approval of Chromebooks, Carrie was able to get those bids secured. Um, so, um, that is one addition to the, to the board agenda from what was published in the paper.
Okay.
I move to adopt the agenda as modified to include seven D underneath this one.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded to, um, adopt the agenda as amended, all in favor? Passes seven zero. Seven D. Seven D.
And it's, it's on your stuff.
Item four, opportunity for visitors.
You're up Ellie.
Did you guys all sign in?
Yeah, they did a good job.
All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to item five, the consent agenda. You have the minutes from three, three twenty-five regular meeting, minutes of the three eleven, uh, morning special meeting, and the three eleven evening special meeting, the cash summary report, check summary, activities account, and donations, do we have any donations? Yes. Looks like there was a...
Yes, a two hundred dollar donation, uh, donation for the incoming freshmen for their, actually for the eighth graders, um, for their, um, activity at the end of the year.
Okay, for their...
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda for some.
I'll second. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, all in favor? It was Tracy, but it said, passes seven zero. That was you Tracy.
Yes.
All right. Move on to item six, old business. We'll start with bids for the Roosevelt Roof.
So DCS received all of the bids, um, they received three, uh, bids. And all of that information is included in your, in your packets there. Roofmasters, um, bid was, um, less financially, um, on, on the, uh, actual dollars and cents, but included in their bid was some contingency, consent, contingency items, that if they found such and such, then it would cost such and such, and then it would co, you know, cost such and so. So if all of those things were added into the bid, theirs will be, um, theirs would have been more. Um, so DCS's recommendation was to go with Ray Roofing. Um, I did do a rubric, um, to, to score out the bids. We have a relationship with Ray Roofing that, um, you know, stretches back to the one at the high school that was redone, the roof at the activity center that was redone. Um, and so, um, you know, we feel like that, that all-inclusive bid, um, with a twenty-year warranty, um, to do exactly what the bid actually asked for, um, is the bid that we would like to bring to the board for recommendation. You know, my recommendation is to go ahead and go with Ray Roofing, um, with, um, um, with a hundred thousand dollars, um, coming out of contingency fund, and then balance of three hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety cents, um, coming out of capital outlay. Questions?
Any questions? I move to approve the bid for Roosevelt Roof Away in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars, ninety cents, with the hundred thousand coming out of contingency fund and the remainder coming out of capital outlay. Okay. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Passes seven zero. Okay, item B, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, non-resident school capacity.
So the, the, the documentation that's provided for you this evening, um, the admin team and I worked on this today. Sorry. Um, so the first chart, uh, chart, table one-one, uh, is the current, current student enrollment, uh, for this year. Table one point two has some historical, um, student enrollment that, that dates back to the nineteen twenty, um, school year. And then on into page two, table one-three, is, um, kind of projection. So, uh, estimates as to how many kindergartners we would have, um, that's a little bit different than last year's number. Uh, made that a little bit more, um, in line with the numbers that we typically have. Uh, and then basically took the numbers and shifted those a year forward, um, for the, for the next year. Um, you know, hoping that we have and will maintain the, the numbers that we currently have. Then, um, the final, uh, table, table one point four is actually what we will, what is, what is being brought, bring brought to the, bring, being brought, sorry, to, uh, to you to approve. And then this whole document will then go onto the website, um, um, prior to make one. I mean, we'll, we'll get that up before that. Um, so, in kindergarten, um, and then the red numbers at the bottom is how many students we would accept as a non-resident student, um, without there being much of a lottery or a, um, uh, so we would take up to four students. If we received more than four students in kindergarten, then we would have to go through the lottery process, um, to, to select which of those four students we would be accepting. Um, and so, we have already started accepting applications. That window was open January one, and we'll run through January, uh, June fifteenth. And then we will, we will make all of the notifications to, um, to those students and parents by July one. Um, I think we'll, we have until July fifteenth, but I'll make sure that that's all wrapped up before I'm done. Um, so, um, each of those numbers down at the bottom are recommendations from administrative team members from those specific buildings and grade levels. Um, so, uh, my recommendation is if no one sees an issue with, um, accepting these numbers, to go ahead and approve, uh, these non-resident student enrollment capacity numbers for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Question on table one point four?
Uh-huh.
Looking at, um, eleventh grade?
Okay.
So it's, so the numbers in black for those?
Oh, it's the numbers in red.
Right.
It's the numbers in red.
Okay, so what's the five up above?
That would be a typo on my part that I forgot to change that.
Okay.
So we're, we're a clue, the numbers in red are the numbers that we administratively worked on today.
I just, yeah.
So I will, I will make those modifications to the black numbers and before we publish that.
Okay, so the numbers in red for ninth through twelfth grade, we've got three, or?
Five.
Yeah, five, but up above it says three.
Right, and that is a typo on my part that I didn't notice until just now.
So all the numbers in black should match the numbers in red?
Yes, because we only have one school per grade.
Okay.
So those numbers should match exactly, and I changed the red numbers, but I did not change the black numbers.
Alright, so kindergarten should be two instead of?
No, it is four.
Okay.
The red numbers is what we approved as administrative.
Uh, I'm curious on third grade, since that was just Y two instead of three, just curious.
So that, that grade level has a, um, a...
Larger?
A larger population of, um, um, high-risk or ha, high-need students. And so, um, that's why some of these are look, are different. You know, so the administrative team looked at these individually as grade levels, not, not just the numbers that we have in the classes.
Okay, cool.
So I apologize for the confusion, I made the change and posted it, and I made the changes to the red numbers that we talked about. So I'm very sorry about that.
That's fine, I just was wondering maybe.
No, I appreciate you bringing it up. I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing that up, so I will make that modification as soon as I'm done. And then we'll, we'll publish those, so the black numbers will match the red numbers.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, non-resident school capacity numbers as presented.
Uh, question, point of order, do we need to say as amended since he's fixing the one chart instead of as presented?
Sure, as amended. Been moved and seconded, all in favor? Passes seven zero. Okay. We will move on to item seven, new business, the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six calendar.
So you will, um, see the two drafts that came to the final vote. The certified staff voted on, uh, three calendars. Um, those three calendars were then, um, pared down to the two drafts that you have in front of you. Um, the vote concluded today, uh, at noon, and sixty percent of the, um, staff approved, uh, draft two. So my recommendation is that, uh, we approve draft two, um, for the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar.
Is there much change from this year's calendar?
The main change is that, uh, draft two is a, is a similar calendar to years past calendar, but the, um, the professional development is, is all-day professional development, as opposed to the half-day professional development that was, that was sprinkled in. And that, that is a, that is a direct result of collaboration that we, um, had with, uh, the calendar committee talking to their staff. Um, so there was basically, the draft one was exactly the same as what we have. Draft two is taking the half-days and making them full days. And then draft three was a combination of, um, both, along with a professional development on the Tuesday after Labor Day. And so, those are the different, the differences in the three.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar draft number two as presented.
I second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Passes seven zero. Okay, item B, KASB membership approval.
Um, I just, I will say, I recommend that you go ahead and approve, um, the, um, continued usage of KASB. Uh, this is both the legal assistance fund contract as well as, um, the membership for, um, uh, KASB for an annual basis.
And the season pass gives us the right to their learning sessions and such, right?
Yes, so the season pass gives, gives board members, um, you know, basically anything that they have on KASB plus. So any learning information, any of that kind of stuff, so.
I move to continue and approve membership with KASB and KASB legal assistance membership as presented.
I second.
I'm not Tracy.
Tracy can do it, okay.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the KASB membership approval, or membership, all in favor? Passes seven zero. Item C, food service management, RFP information.
So Jordan and I, uh, worked on the creation of the food service management, uh, request for, for proposals. That went through, uh, about two rounds of modifications, uh, at a lower level at KSDE, um, to make sure that we were meeting all of the minimum requirements and, and all of the information was, was correct. Then that was submitted to, um, one of the supervisors in food service management at KSDE, which then approved, um, that for us to submit it. Uh, we then submitted that to six companies, um, that are approved by the state to do food service management. Uh, I've already received one response that they will not be bidding, uh, that out. Uh, we also published that, um, in the Hoyzington Dispatch for two weeks in a row, uh, as well as place it on our website and social media. And then if, if somebody does come in, um, we do have a paper copy of all three of the documents, uh, available here at the district office. Then there will be an open window for, um, any of those, um, bidders to come and do a onsite, um, tour of our facilities. And then, uh, we will close that window, um, I believe it's May fifteenth, May sixteenth. Um, we will close that window, um, and then we will do the review. Uh, Jordan and I will sit down and review those, um, bids, um, compare them to what we've done in the past. And then we will, um, bring that to the board meeting on June second, I believe it is. So, um, so that's kind of that timeframe, um, you know, we were able to get, uh, quite a bit of information done pretty quickly. Um, but, you know, we had a good, um, Jordan helped me with a lot of information and, and we had good, uh, support from KSDE on that. So, any questions about that, um, process or who we've submitted that to? Just information at this time.
Okay. We will move on to item D, approval of Chromebook bid.
Um, so Carrie was able to go ahead and submit, uh, three bids. Uh, he had six, um, but these were the three most competitive bids. And, uh, the recommendation, um, for a hundred and sixty Chromebooks, um, which is the actual least expensive bid. Um, but it's a higher-quality device, one that he and, and some of the others saw at ITSD last, uh, last summer. Um, so, you know, always durability is a, is a, a prime concern, uh, when we start putting, uh, devices in the hands of teenagers. So this device seems to be a lot more durable than some of the devices that we've had in the past. And so, for this, uh, normal rotation of a hundred and sixty, um, my recommendation is to go ahead and, um, approve the bid with Best Buy for a hundred and sixty ASUS Chromebooks for the total of forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty cents as presented.
Any questions?
I move to approve the bid from Best Buy for a hundred and sixty ASUS Chromebooks for a total of forty-seven thousand, nine twenty-three twenty as presented. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Passes seven zero. Okay, move on to item eight, reports, we'll start with Mrs. Walker.
So we, yeah, she, she's, she's got the crew, so, um, she presented hers to you in a copy, so, if you want to go ahead and review that and, and kind of take a look at the coming activities, um, for Roosevelt.
Um, what day is that half-day of school that's after book week?
Uh, Wednesday, December twenty.
April thirtieth?
It's the, yeah, the thirtieth.
Perfect, awesome.
Okay, Mr. Mason.
Good evening. April, uh, by far is the busiest, busiest month of the year at the high school. I mean, there's literally activities on every single day except for Wednesdays, even on the Monday after Easter. So, uh, very busy, which makes the month go by very quickly. Um, as you all know, we did have our prom last weekend, um, went off perfectly fine, no issues whatsoever. Um, kids did a good job, seemed like they had a good time, I think. The school is really quiet today, so. That's kind of nice, but, uh, I want to thank the four, uh, prom sponsors that we went with.
Thank you for not having me work.
Four prom sponsors, uh, Mrs. Reiser, Mr. Reiser, Mr. Sargent, and Alicia Alvar, who's one of our special ed parents. Uh, they did a good job of helping students get things set up, supervising the, helping me supervise the dance, everything went really well. Um, at the dance itself, the after-prom party, um, thanks to Booster Club and all the numerous parent volunteers who were there to help out with that. Um, again, the night went, went off very well, so. Um, and as you all know, leading up to prom, we did that arrive alive activity out by the ballparks. Kevin is part of that, is part, uh, part of the emergency crews responding, um, that was a very good event. Uh, I think the last time we did it, it's probably five or six years ago.
Yeah, about five years.
And it was in exactly the spot, but this time, I, I thought they, uh, had a lot more involvement. Um, Megan Elmore with the Hoyson EMT was one that kind of spearheaded that, she's the one that started contact with me several months ago with this. Uh, I mean, they had emergency crews there from obviously Hoyson EMT, Clapham EMTs, um, State Troopers.
Rash County.
Barn County Sheriff's Department, obviously Hoyson, uh, Rush County, and then also the Life Watch came in. So it was a little bit over an hour, um, and it was a pretty serious situation. Um, and it was meant to kind of be a scare tactic to the kids on what a poor decision could, could mean. So, um, I want to thank all the volunteers that came out and, and did that, and I thought that, that was great, uh, for the kids to, to experience that. We start our state assessments at, at the high school tomorrow morning. Uh, all state assessments are due on Friday, April twenty-fifth. Uh, so all sophomores will be taking reading and math, juniors will be taking science and also, um, history. Our annual senior awards assembly will be Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, so you need to take notes on that. Uh, starting at nine fifteen in High School, October eleventh. So at that assembly, we award all the scholarships and other various awards that our seniors get throughout the year. This year, uh, we, we went back to more of a traditional, uh, student council setup at the high school for several years. Uh, the principal before me actually kind of went away from the StuCo and went to, uh, a stu, more of a student leadership class through Link Group. And, and that was a really good program, we just kind of felt like it ran its course. Um, the teacher that we had teaching leadership, um, left, and we needed to get another math class into our schedule. So we decided to go back to a more traditional student council setup where the candidates actually have to give speeches. Um, the student body, they actually have to register to vote. Uh, so we are going to do our candidate speeches on April seventeenth with, uh, voting on April twenty-third. On, uh, Monday, March twenty-fourth, we had our annual, uh, school board banquet for the seniors. We have, um, very impressive nineteen students, um, attending that with a cumulative GPA of three point five or, or greater. So that was, that was really fun to see. On March thirteenth, right before spring break, we had our student net conferences. And I'm pleased to report that we had a ninety-four percent, um, attendance by parents there. I know before we went to the student net conferences, we had the traditional cafeteria style. In the spring at the high school, we had maybe a forty-five percent attendance. So the ninety-four percent is, that, that's remarkable. And you know, those of you that, that come, the, the parents that are heavily involved with their students already and talk to them on a regular basis, the student net conference may not be very beneficial for those parents, but we are bringing in those parents that typically aren't very involved. So, again, we've almost a hundred percent attendance there, so that's, that's always, that's always good to see. Uh, we are going to be hosting an ACT English Boot Camp on July seventh through tenth, from nine to eleven-thirty at the high school. Uh, we did have a, a five-session class back in December, leading up to the ACT test in December. Uh, this is put on by Carci Leach, um, she is the owner of My School Games and Great Men. Uh, she's also a former, um, AP language arts teacher, so she does a very good job. So her specialization is in the reading and writing part of it. So, uh, that boot camp is going to specialize on just the English part of the ACT test. Um, again, that's just July seventh through tenth, and that is, uh, sponsored by Modern Enterprises. And lastly, uh, this is the first time this is, the state has done this this year, uh, they did a FAFSA challenge. So the application for, um, financial aid for students. I'm pleased to report that Hoyson was tied for first place in the state in three A schools, with, uh, sixty-six percent of our seniors completing that FAFSA form. So, first of all, that's a great job to our seniors for being on top of things, but, um, definitely to Mrs. Hope Grandoff. Um, that's, yeah, she drives that, so I want to report to you, Cass, that thanks to her efforts in our, during all senior class, that we are tied for first place in three A, um, with our percent of students filling that form out. So, good job to Hope and our seniors. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Uh, spring sports are in full swing at the middle school. We have thirty-six students currently doing track, along with another twenty-four doing tennis. Uh, tennis has had a successful start already, having three competitions, including one tonight in Lyons. Um, several students have gone undefeated already and are getting wins on their first season. So, great, great effort by Coach Mooney and his group. Track traveled to a very wet meet, uh, last week in Pratt for Skyline, and had thirteen teams there and got a lot of great opportunities, came home with several medals, and a lot of kids obviously setting the bar for themselves for the year. Uh, I've heard several kids in our hall talking how they want to beat some records, so it's, it's great that they're, they've got goals happening already. Uh, this week, we'll play host to Larned Reno Valley and Liberty at the track Thursday at four PM. So if you're interested in coming out and watching them compete, or interested in helping at all, feel free to come on over. Uh, tennis will also compete again this week in Lyons and Larned on Thursday. Again, Coach Mooney, Coach Dable doing a great job of constantly getting all of our athletes out there. You know, only being able to take six to eight, six to nine of them at a time, you gotta do a lot of meets. KA Wise, led by, uh, Ms. Presley Smith and Mary Smith, will hold a bingo competition this weekend. Doors will open on Saturday at twelve-thirty at the middle school gym, and it will, the bingo will actually start at one. They have twenty-five prizes for people of all ages, including a raffle, and there will be a concession stand available as well. So, definitely bring out any of your kids or come out yourself. Band and vocal this last month traveled to, uh, Pratt Liberty to compete in our league contest, and had several students who competed in solos along with ensembles, brought home anywhere from ones to a few twos and threes, and then a student who received an AP performance. So, congratulations to all of them on their efforts. Um, Robotics finished their season last month as well, again, competing yet another tough season. Um, this year, we fell just shy of making it to Worlds by ten points. The, the difference of getting the ball that they had this year through the scoring zone one time. So, they were, they were very close. Uh, so congratulations to our new coach this year, Ms. Hammack, on all of her effort with those students, along with her tournament, Ms. Alfred. Uh, I know those students are definitely getting ready for next year and getting excited to see what the video of next year's game is going to look like. I, I personally want to thank the board for letting me go to the KIA triple-A conference this couple of weekends ago. Uh, a lot of great sessions that happened there, along with a lot of good, uh, networking that occurs. occurs. Looking forward to talking to Mr. Brungard about some of the ideas that came up from meetings. State testing at the middle school will be next week's. Have students definitely get some good sleep, have good breakfast, and come ready to do their best. April twenty-eighth will be our spring music concert. That is a change of date, so yeah, April twenty-eighth, it'll be both band and vocal at the high school auditorium. And I believe we are working on a sixth grade track meet as well, potentially happening on the half day at the end of April. That will occur at lacrosse. It's an effort by the lacrosse superintendent slash principal and myself and potentially a few other schools. So trying to work on getting some opportunities for our students who traditionally in our building don't get those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, superintendent report, Mr. Crowe.
So over the next couple of months, we'll be talking more about the cardiac emergency response plan. That is a, in reference to a piece of legislation that passed a year ago where we will be looking at a district as well as building plans for cardiac response. We we are in a good spot in that we have multiple AEDs and we've been able to upgrade those AEDs, you know, and so that's a piece of that plan. So it'll be a group that we'll be working with to get that put together. Oprah presented to me the number of meals that we that we served in the month of March. We served three thousand three hundred and ten breakfasts, six thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven lunches, and five hundred staff meals. So so they presented that to me today, so I thought I'd go ahead and relay that to you. Tomorrow's, we'll be working with Amber Miller from K S D E via Zoom call to have our six month check-in for our school improvement, talking about our progress towards our six month and a year plan, which is Joel talked about earlier this evening, is standards alignment. And we we spent the majority of the day working through standards alignment, professional development, to introduce a lot of, a lot of the new information and nuance to the way the K S D E is proposed to do standards alignment. So we're well on our way on those plans. And then lastly, I met with the Life Smart Group that will be going to Chicago April twenty-fourth to the twenty-seventh. We took some time to talk about the plans that they wanted to do on their afternoon that is free, and we are going to be attending the ice cream museum, and then from there going to Navy Pier. Sound like a pretty good idea to me. So then we also did some work on, they're planning on doing some T-shirts that will be similar and the same for for all of them to wear while we travel, as well as while we are there. And then we talked about the masquerade party and dance. We also decided that Chicago-style pizza would be the meal that we would go to the evening that we have away from the hotel, that we'll eat together as a group. And then today, we actually found out that our sister team or our partner team is from Oklahoma, and so the team will be exchanging gift bags with, you know, things from Kansas and exchanging those with, you know, our team from Oklahoma. So all four of the members are really excited and looking forward to it, as well as very confident in their abilities to 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 move forward and progress through the the competition. So it was exciting to have time to talk with them about that. So that's all I have at this point on my report.
Item E, legislative report.
So legislation is done. They will, right now, the governor is reviewing the bills that passed, and then if there are, you know, the veto session is April tenth, so coming up, and so if there are bills that that come back above the line and they need to readdress those, they they will then need to have the, go into session for that veto session. That is a high likelihood that that will take place because there were a couple of bills that were left hanging. There were a couple of funding issues, not even related to education, that were left hanging, and so they will need to address some of those bills. One of those is the twenty mil general fund, so they will need to address some of those. Primarily, the bills that did affect education, there was a, there was a bill that did pass that, you know, passed a base state aid that would increase by about three point nine percent to to five thousand six hundred and eleven dollars. Special education did take a pretty severe hit, so we were hoping that we would do seventy-five million plus, and what ended up being passed was ten million. So so let me restate that. We were hoping that we would get the seventy-five million that we got last year plus an additional amount, and that seventy-five million went away, and all we got for special ed funding was ten million. So, you know, just to reiterate, you know, a different way of looking at it, the seventy-five million provided additional eighty-one thousand dollars that we did not have to take out of our general fund. So we are looking at potentially, you know, only receiving about seven thousand dollars, and then we will have to fill in the additional out of our general fund. So that's, that's really why special education is so important to talk to your legislators about is because we have to provide services by federal law and state law. They only, they only provide us about sixty-two percent of what the funding should be, and so the rest of that has to come out of the general fund. So that that was a little disappointing this year, but there were a lot of things that they were looking at cutting out of this year's physical year budget, and they they ended up not touching those. So, you know, that would have caused a kind of a big headache, but they didn't touch those, and so so we're pleased with that. But overall, I believe the legislative session was was a net positive, so we'll kind of see how the veto session goes, and some of those, some of those bills that we think are dead sometimes rear their ugly head during the veto session. So but but overall, we've, you know, we're moving forward with that. So questions on that?
Mr. Crowe, I've got two questions. One, have we taken a quick look at our budget to make sure we can absorb that cost for special education?
So the eighty, the eighty-one, we didn't even budget for that this year. That was, that was the advice that we were given by K S D E. We went ahead and budgeted in what we normally do, and then then the eighty-one was just kind of gravy, and then we didn't have to pay it out of our general fund this year. So so we're fine on that. That's already money that we we typically would have paid for anyway.
Okay.
So, yeah, good question.
Perfect. Second question I have was on, have you had any guidance from K A S B or K S D E regarding the presidential executive actions on K through twelve funding?
So.
The one that says that school boards have to pass an affidavit and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I've read one article. I've not seen anything from K S D or K A S B on that as of right now. So I've only read one article on it, so so I don't, I would imagine tomorrow I'll probably get an influx of of emails from different sources, so so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Item F, board member reports. Anybody have anything? Okay. Move on to item nine, consideration of district personnel. How much time do we have? I don't know what she wants to ask you.
Um, let's.
Starting?
Thirty.
Okay. I move we go into executive session for thirty minutes pursuant to discussing non-elected personnel under the K O M A exception for the purpose of discussing nominations and resignations with Mr. Crowe as present. The open meeting will resume in the boardroom at, we'll just say eight-thirty.
Second.
Been moved in second and all in favor. Sorry. All right. Coming out of executive session with no motions at this time. I move we go into executive session for twenty minutes pursuant to discussing non-elected personnel under the K O M A exception for the purpose of discussing nominations, resignations with Mrs. Walker and Mr. Crowe as present. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Meeting will resume at eight fifty.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor. Pass is seven zero. Here we go. I move to accept the resignation of Carrie Tushoff from transitional kindergarten aide as of May twentieth.
Second.
Been moved in second and all in favor. Pass is seven zero. I move to accept the nominations of summer weight coaches and summer students help as presented. Do you need me to draw them?
Second.
It's been moved and moved and seconded, all in favor. I move to accept the transfer of Trina Luters for the position of first grade teacher as presented. I'm just going to do all of these and then you guys can, and then I move to accept the nomination of Addison Smith for the position of first grade teacher as presented, and I move to accept the nomination of Keely Wolf for the position of kindergarten teacher as presented.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor. Pass is seven zero. I move, Board of Education of USD four thirty-one, Barton County, Kansas, finds that the contract of Chris Knopman should be non-renewed and that Chris Knopman should be given written notice on or before May ninth, twenty twenty-five, of the intent of the Board of Education to non-renew her contract for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I move in second.
Sarah, seconded that?
Yeah. All in favor? Pass is seven zero. We have nothing for negotiations, so I move we adjourn.
Second.
Been moved in second and to adjourn, all in favor. Seven zero, thank you all. We will see you next Monday at six o'clock.
Yes.